If everybody's focusing, good evening, welcome. It's Wednesday, the 27th of April 2016. It's 7:03 PM. Sorry, I'm a bit late. Can I make sure everybody signs the book? Now, the first item on the agenda is vote of no confidence. And it's to consider and vote on a motion to the Council of Ironbrooks. Because it involves me, I suppose in theory it's a declaration. So I'm going to leave you to it. And I'll have councillor Howie come up. Everybody wants me, I'll be out here.
The agenda item on then, but we have quite some chairman. We've all seen the paper. Does anybody want any clarification of the paper? Is everyone happy? No, okay.
And I'd like to make an additional comment.
Well, I've signed my question. If anybody wants clarification of the paper.
Okay, but I just made it aware that I would like to make.
Does anybody want to debate the paper before we move on? Open for debate, if anyone wants to debate it. You take that as a no? You can't debate it on your own, Martin.
Well, I can make a comment.
I've asked if anyone wants to debate it in it, Brook Pino, he does want to debate it, Martin.
Yes, then I'm just going to make a comment, which I'm perfectly entitled to.
Make a comment, then.
Yes.
You don't say, don't you say that.
I am appalled that I have to bring this to council. And I'm appalled that the chairman has not decided to do the honourable thing.
Martin, I'm going to stop. I'm sorry, Martin.
Sorry, no, I'm allowed to speak.
Martin, you are allowed to address the paper and the generalities.
Yes, and you haven't even let me finish what I'm saying.
Please, please interrupt. Can I just finish? You are not addressing your generalities.
I am. I'm explaining, I'm appalled that I have to present it to this council. This is years and years of crap from people like Mr Lowe.
I object to some language that's been...
I object to being called a prostitute, a nutter, and everything in there. And everybody in that side of the corner there sits there smirking and laughing about things.
Will you please?
Thank you.
Will you please?
It's a total embar... Sorry, it's a total embar... I'm keeping cool. It's a total embarrassment for this council that we had a deputy chairman who can write things like this to members of the council.
I have to ask you again, I'll stop the meeting if I have to. I have asked you...
I am talking about this agenda item that has a serious effect on this council and myself.
We've got the agenda items.
Can I just object to shouting because it's getting me in my...
Can you please just...
I'm sorry, but I am not going to be silenced. This is a serious issue that's been going on since 2009.
Councillor Brooks, I'm chairing the meeting at the moment.
I know you're chairing the meeting. I'm very much aware of that, this behaviour.
So will you please let me say again? We have the paper. Nobody wants clarification of it. Nobody wants to debate it.
And I want a comment of my opinion and add to it.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm not...
Yes, I will, because we've had an email this evening which strengthens this, referring to the 106 contribution. Mr Lowe was the chairman in 2014. And that email from Rutland County Council makes it very clear he knew what was going on. So that is why I have no confidence in the man.
Councillor Brooks, I'm not prepared to sit there...
So do you accept that, Mr Deputy Chairman, as acceptable behaviour from the chairman of our council?
I am not sitting here judging the paper. We have got a paper. Do you want to make... You've got a proposal on the paper. Do you want to make a proposal?
I'm making a proposal when I get to it. I would feel that I should be freely allowed to make a comment supporting my paper without interruption.
The comments you're making, Councillor Brooks, aren't supporting your paper.
They are, because I say there are a number of issues. And I didn't want to make this a 15, 16-page document.
That was your property. But this one, do you want to make a proposal?
I will make the proposal, but I'm appalled that you have kept interrupting me and not allowing me to make a single comment.
Do you want to make a proposal?
I make the proposal as written, and you can read it.
The proposal is a motion for a vote of no confidence in councillor Adam Lowe, and that he should not remain as mayor or chairman.
That's correct.
Do we have a second one?
So if I not second it, everybody round this table is supporting that conduct.
The motion...
And I find that is disgusting.
The second one, do you want the chair number back?
Yes, please, thank you very much.
I absolutely find that disgusting, that nobody would second it. Because that is showing to me that you find it acceptable for the chairman of this council to have things out in the public domain that say I am nuts and a prostitute and corrupt with our local police. It's absolutely disgusting. Oh, you can smile, Mr Lowe. You are just one big idiot, Mr Lowe. And you cannot complain about me calling you an idiot when you have suggested in the public domain that I am a prostitute and a nutter. You are a disgrace.
I think, yeah, quite soon tonight, it explains why this council is at rock bottom.
Don't you blame me, Mr Stubbs. You're the person that they're moaning about because you sit here grunting and groaning and moaning when people talk.
Right, okay, we...
So you better just shut up.
Thank you, Tracy.
But don't you call me that.
We may as well...
I have not sworn at you at all. I am not a bastard, and you can take that back before this meeting continues.
Apologise the way you can apologise today.
Martin, can I just say?
Can everyone, this one, Tracy, go on?
We may as well rip this up. We're supposed to be conducting ourselves in the highest standard.
Well, we can't, because even people like you are accepting that from our chairman. If I wrote that about you and said you were that, what would you be doing at the moment? Sitting there all pretty and saying this is acceptable? It is disgusting.
All right, let's...
I'm sorry, but I'm not...
Can I ask everybody to be quiet? Martin, can we carry on the meeting?
No, because I don't accept that. It is disgusting that every member is blaming me for that. If you read it properly, he didn't even have a problem with me at the time. It is absolutely disgusting.
I'm going to continue with the meeting, and I'll move on to the apologies. The apology is standing order. I want you to receive apologies for absent councillor Jasmine Hopkins is sent in her colleges this evening. A proposal, please, proposed by councillor Howard, submitted by councillor Stubbs, all those in favour? So that's... Martin, are you for or against?
I'm not voting for anything at the moment, because I'm not thinking... You know, I'm not able to think clearly after what's just happened.
That's nine of four, and councillor Brooks refused to vote.
He hasn't voted, so don't mean it as a refusal, he just hasn't voted. You make it far too personal, Mr Lowe, all the time.
So what I wanted to do is actually, I wanted to change the order of the minutes. And that is item 15 on here is the proper officer. And what it is, is that I'd like to propose, and I'm going to propose it from the chair, that this is brought forward to the... So actually, the next hyphen 2A, if you like. And that's because the councillor took that suggestion. So seconded by Joyce.
Who is the proper officer? There's no report here, it just says... How can we vote? No, I want to know who the proper officer is. The agenda item just says...
Martin, are we voting?
No, excuse me, chairman. I want to know... No, we can't vote on it if you don't tell us who it is.
With nine votes for, it's counted. We're going to bring this item forward. I'm now going to answer your question. The proper officer for this council, which you do know, is the clerk, which is Richard White. Everybody knows that.
Yeah, we know that.
Sorry, chairman, I missed the beginning. We have just voted on moving the item.
Yes, the proper officer.
I'm glad I'm not the only one who was confused.
So the item, the proper officer, the proper officer for this council is Richard White. Now, as we know, Richard White is not at work at the moment. And we're coming up to an end-of-year session where we need to have a proper officer. And in the interim, what we can do, we can make a proposal that Alison Greed becomes the proper officer for the council until the clerk returns. Has anybody got questions around that? I took advice from the people at Amnesty from the OMLAC, and they said that we can vote in, we can...
Can you give the definition, chairman, of what a proper officer is? Are we actually...
Is it in standing orders?
Are we actually...
I'll have to find it.
I'm not querying it, I'm just making sure that we've got a qualified proper officer.
Right.
Sorry, Alison, but...
Yeah, well, right. I asked the question, can the assistant clerk be a proper officer?
Yes.
Yes, they can. They do not have to be silver trained, which is what a clerk is. The proper officer is the person that the councillor appoint as their proper officer. And we need to have a proper officer, I think that's what you're saying, in the absence of the... Do you want to just find it in the assistant clerk? Martin, you want to say something?
Yes, it's very similar when we didn't have a chairman. A proper officer means if we don't have one, that this council cannot lawfully function. And since we haven't had a proper officer, there's been payments made and council business conducted, which technically means that we've not been complying with the law. So as soon as we appoint Alison, it will be for the best.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Any... Sorry, I just... Anybody got any questions while my man looks at the documents?
Chairman, yes, I'm particularly happy with that. But are we going to discuss at some stage in the near future what our plans are? Or is this a permanent feature?
It's a temporary fixture, because the clerk is only off for a set period of five. There is a return-to-date that we have. And when the clerk returns, we then pass another agenda item or another resolution which takes Alison out of the proper officer role and puts the clerk back in as the proper officer. So... Right, okay. Thank you for that. Right, proper officer A, I did bring it out. Everything else, I left my documents there. The council's proper officer shall be either the clerk, the assistant clerk in the absence of the clerk, or such other person as may be appointed by the council to undertake the work of the proper officer from time to time. The proper officer or the person appointed to act as such during the proper officer's absence shall fulfil the duties assigned to the proper officer in the standing orders. The spending authority is detailed in financial regulations. On the point that Martin quite rightly raised, where he said that without a proper officer, that we shouldn't have been making payments, we were covered by them, because what we had, we had delegated powers in the absence of the clerk. The assistant clerk could do that, that's contained in our financials.
We just have a loophole for every law that protects this council. It's just unbelievable.
It's quite a long document, but in essence, all the...
I honestly, chairman, I wonder why we have rules when you just keep constantly saying we have a standing order that gives us overall this, overall that.
Okay, I don't need to read any more. So basically, because we're coming up to the end of the year, in the AGM, we do need a proper officer. And the clerk is not back until after the AGM. So that is reason that I was going to do this thing where, from the chair, I was going to propose the council temporarily appoint Alison Greed as a proper officer for the council.
I second that.
Seconded, yeah?
Yep. It doesn't need to be brought forward, because it clearly states there that the assistant can be classed as the proper officer.
No, but...
So, but this is, to me, it's already written down that Alison's quite capable and legal.
Yes.
To carry out what she's doing. This makes it...
This sign seals it for the AGM. We would need it to be more appropriate for the AGM, and that's what this covers. So that is the proposal, seconded by Joyce. All those in favour? Nine, are you not voting? Absolutely, thank you, everyone, Martin. Okay, sorry, I forgot my papers on that, but it's been a very busy day. Declarations of interest. Members are asked to declare if required any disposable punitive interest they may have in respect to items on the agenda. Any other interest they may have in respect to items on the agenda. Can make sure everybody does sign the book to say that they've attended. And if you've got any declarations, you can put them in the book as well, please. Has anybody got any declarations at this point? Thank you. Item four is the minutes, to confirm the minutes at a meeting of Oakham Town Council held on Wednesday, March 13, 2016. Any comments or observations? People that communicated issues, they have been corrected and made right.
So we need time to further, yes?
No, I think not. Proposal to accept the minutes from Vince, seconded by Stanley. Ah, yeah, it says on here, March 13, that's right, I was reading it up there. Beg pardon, yeah, sorry, it's April 13, so... Martin, you abstaining?
I vote for that.
You're... Okay, it's actually down, thank you very much.
You should have my question. You should have my question on the unlawful payment to Oakham Town Partnership. And I'm very sorry that I have to inconvenience members on pointing out unlawful activity.
Okay, what we're coming to next, we're coming to councillors' questions. This is to answer questions. Notified to the clerk on the section, understanding order number nine, members note 72 hours notice required. Do you want to read your question out?
Please, because it's got the issue about only being able to ask one, which makes it very difficult.
Right, I'll read out the question that you've asked here. It says, Oakham Town Partnership has paid £1,000. The payment made by the clerk is unlawful because this council did not give authority to pay. And the payment made does not even comply with the council's basic financial regulations. Can the councillor explain the steps it is taking to recover this unlawful payment? Are you happy that that's your question?
Well, you've ignored the first part of it, which was the explanation why I can't ask...
Oh, beg pardon.
A fuller question, not me.
Okay, the first part, just to state, I would like to ask a number of questions relating to Oakham Town Council accounts, like why the council has not complied with the audit law to carry out the required quarterly audits. Unfortunately, standing orders were changed, so I'm only permitted to ask one question at each meeting, which in my opinion is obstructing the duties and responsibilities of any councillor. For that reason, I simply...
What's funny about that, Mrs Lucas?
So the question that Martin asked, I can't give you an answer on that, Martin. So what I'm going to do, in reference to standing orders, I'm going to do a written reply on that and give it to you.
Why can't you give me an answer? You've been doodling about it on the clerk's notice board in there. It's got to be answered in public, it's public funds.
Yeah, well, that's my problem, I'll hand it to you and...
No, I want it read out in public and an explanation of...
Well, I'll do that at the next meeting.
At the next meeting, yes, thank you. I accept that, but I don't want it just written to me. I want it read out and a proper explanation and how we're going to recoup...
Understanding orders, by the way, for the benefit of the rest of the council and also any members of the public, any questions put to the chair, there is in our standing orders, it does state that we don't have to give an answer, that we can give a written reply, okay?
But you said this morning that you wanted to be open and transparent.
Well, I also want to be accurate. And it's very difficult for me to make this up.
But I put that in last week, more than 72 hours ago.
Chairmen's and members' reports, to receive a report from the chairman on functions attended, blah, blah. Joyce, you've got one.
Blah, blah.
And I've got one.
How professional.
I do, yeah.
And you've got one. Right, so what I'm going to do is I'll go around the table. Joyce first?
No.
Vince first?
Yeah. I don't have a problem.
Following last Thursday's celebration in the park for the Queen's birthday, I'd just like to thank all the members present for their help, cooperation, the local businesses for their support, and the town for coming out and supporting the event. I thought it was very well attended, and it did put OTC up there for a while. However, I think we made that down a little bit. But thank you for your support. We look forward to the 12th of June, and hopefully we'll do it again in warmer weather without getting cold.
Is it that big?
No, no, it might have one, not that it... But thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Joyce, sorry, I'll head it off now. Joyce.
I'm standing for the change.
Oh, okay, thank you for that.
Report to Oakham and Bloom Meeting. I attended for a short time Oakham and Bloom Meeting on the 25th of April 2016 at 7:00 PM at the Lord Nelson. Because of previous commitment, I could only stay there for 30 minutes. However, I believe in that small space of time, how fortunate Oakham is to have such a great band of volunteer gardeners. Seventeen members weeded round the M&amp;S store on Land's End Way two weeks ago. And I went up to see them and to thank them, and I also offered my greenhouse for some items. And now they have hired an allotment to cater for more plants to be grown by members, thus saving a lot of money. Everyone was invited to take a tray and to grow on some plants for the coming season. And I've got six in my greenhouse as custodian of six. Great. All members are working incredibly hard, and soon they will be organising the judging group. I was asked by councillor Howard to put my thinking cap on for ideas of how best the beacon could be used in the future. I had the notion to ask Oakham and Bloom, and they're delighted to accept the offer if it's still available. They're going to put the beacon on the roundabout at the vets hospital, you know, it's an Ashwell prison, not Ashwell? Roundabout? Well, it's by the veterinary hospital. And they're thinking of ways of en... Also, they're thinking of with a plaque to say it's the Queen's 90th birthday thing. And they're thinking of ways to enhance the railway station. At that point, I had to leave. There's a lot of material I've just added in. I've heard since that I upset some members of Oakham and Bloom. I have made inquiries, and nobody was upset by me or anything that I've said. But I shall soon have the official minutes and will report if there's anything significant to report from the minutes, the official minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry, Alison, it's in just a bit of a fiddle, this is.
Yes.
Okay? I'll let you have that.
A couple of things I wanted to make. First of all, I wanted to recognise the... Oh, sorry, Martin, you have the report.
Yeah, very quickly. It was about the beacon lighting event, and I would like to thank all those that helped Vince in organising, which was probably one of the happiest and well-attended events the town has seen for a long time. And to add to it, I think it was such a shame that members of his working group said to him and other members of the public that they hoped it would fail.
But that's irrelevant.
It's not irrelevant, because it shows the destructive nature of members of this council.
Thank you, Martin.
Didn't say to me that it would fail.
They hoped you would fail.
Not at a meeting. Sorry, Martin.
Wherever they said it...
You've got miscommunications, so...
You told me yourself, Mrs Howard.
Thank you very much, everybody, for...
Miscommunications, Martin.
If I...
We'll talk later.
Yeah, put it back ahead, please, because it's not...
Well, we can go and speak to the woman at Oakham Town Partnership. She told me without any nudging the other day.
I've typed it out, so I'll handle it.
Mrs Oaks. I don't lie.
Right, what I'd like to say...
I'm getting fed up with it.
Thank you for bringing the beacon lighting event to the forefront, those members that have mentioned it. It was very well attended, and congratulations to everybody in every sense, in particular, even though they're not here. They're at a catness, I say, Catness College, I think did brilliant. A question was put to me by a couple of councillors, and it wasn't an oppressive question, it was just a curiosity one, because it was zero-funded, and I applaud the way that it was managed in that regard. I made a personal donation of £90 to the event, so that I could give drinks to some of the people that were invited guests and also to the members of the public. And this is okay. And another money that was dealt with on that night has been discussed, and it's being dealt with through a ledger system which will be recorded appropriately. And everything is applicable in that regard, having spoken to people about it this evening. So there are no queries or quals on that front. Two things I wanted to mention on the chairman's report loosely. Jail Street mural is being put back up in the next couple of weeks, which has been... I don't know if you'll remember, it all went up and it went away again. The money that was used to do that came out of a lottery fund grant and various donations. And at the moment, there's still £360 held in town council accounts, which is money left over from that money. That £360 is meant to be used for the mural project. And what it is, is that the person that helped develop that, which was the artist, Monica, it was always an idea at the beginning to have a plaque. And she's making arrangements to have a plaque designed and made, which was part of the remit laid out in the beginning. The plaque cost is around about £210. So at some point, this will come back to council as well. Just, there's delegated authority to pay that amount of money, and there's also money in that fund to pay for it. We're just making council's way now that this has come up. She had been communicating with Richard, because Richard was one of the main points of contact. Of course, she wasn't getting any replies, because of course, Richard wasn't about. So she'd let me have a seat. And one other thing, back in, I think it was the back end of last year, September, October, November, around about that time, Oakham Town Council contributed through their grant system around about £120. It was £119.90, if people want me to be specific. But £120 to the key safe project, and it was stipulated that it would purchase 10 key safes that would be used for residents in Oakham. I spoke to round Rutland today, yesterday rather, when I had a meeting with them. And just to give you a heads up, since that grant was made, there have been six key safes fitted in Oakham from that money. So the money that Oakham Town Council put into that has been well-used. There's still four that will be, which will be used only for people of Oakham. The bigger picture is that there are 12 further key safes were fitted in the rest of Rutland in the same time. Okay? So, well done on that. Right, item... Oh, plant support, have you got the plant support?
No, we haven't. All I need to know is that Plantsgate are going to start getting the floor displays up end of May, early June.
Say that again.
End of May, early June, Plantsgate.
Plantsgate, yeah. End of May?
Early June.
Early June.
The baskets.
Ah, so she had the work replaced by the 30th, wasn't it? Oh, the 30th. It's the castle, isn't it?
Castle, yeah.
Okay. Deputation for the public, members of the public are invited to a rest of meeting. Do any members of the public want to get up and say anything? Working groups and staying groups, strategy assurance. This is to receive reports of the working groups and staying groups to make any decisions as appropriate. Jasmine, unfortunate absence, I think the report has been distributed, am I correct?
Yeah, the rest one that came around.
And then, are there any other reports or any other comments? I don't know, I've got them. They're just in the mods, it's not... Just to be noted. Martin? Take that. Oh, right, okay. Good news, next one. Next week, we'll... I'm just, and that's about, I was going to say, I'm going to waive the standing order where members, if they prefer to sit, they can sit. So if you'd rather sit, you can sit.
I prefer to, no, I prefer to stand, because then I know to shut up when I sit down.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, crack on.
I have no respect for the chain, anyway, it's a piece of fool's gold.
Okay. What did you want to add?
Now, you've got no respect for Jesus Christ, have you, Stan?
Martin, what did you want to add on the report?
Well, no, it's just a purely, because some members may be aware, that I've started helping the office by collating and realised the amount of paper we're using, and I'm trying to bring down administration costs for this council. I'm wondering if it's really necessary, particularly in these two reports, that we keep getting repeats of every page. It's such a waste, we only need the latest page. And I thought I'd just ask if that could be considered in future, because we're getting quite a mounting of paper. And if this gets bigger throughout the year, it's just constantly repeating from January.
We can pass that round, get back to people, see what they think. If the most recent page is anyone that's printed, it's...
It's just because this is not cheap paper we're using either. It may seem petty, but you know, even delivering the agendas is saving over £20 a meeting.
Thank you. Anybody else want to add?
That is a bit petty, but it all adds up, the pennies.
Item 10 on the agenda, it's the staffing hours in office opening, agenda item. It states in here that the clerk is signed off until May 15. There is a requirement in our standing orders where, when the chairman becomes aware that a member of staff is off long term, they have to call a staffing committee meeting. And if there's an impact on the absence of the clerk, they have powers to do certain things. Martin, you want to say something?
Yeah, I just find it extraordinary that you have to come to council to ask us to consider and make decisions on office opening hours. But you found that there was a standing order which was slightly open-ended and made a decision amongst three of you in the staffing committee to expend or make expenditure to accountants to complete a return. in the staffing committee to expend or make expenditure to accountants to complete a return of about three hundred and fifty pounds, which is just basically transferring figures on to two pieces of paper and signing it. I just don't get why we're having to decide when the office is opening, when that's a more serious issue which you choose to deal with in a small staffing committee meeting and you bring nonsense like this to us.
Yep, okay. Anybody else got any comments on the nonsense that's been brought before you?
Is this, I'm happy to move forward with these hours.
Well, it's already been done, that's why it's nonsense to bring it.
I suppose it'd be acceptable.
Right. Yeah, the, thank you for that, Vince. Yeah, what it is, at the meeting, we did actually, within our delegated powers, agreed to change the hours. We agreed, we voted and agreed to appoint a casual person to assist the clerk. And we also voted and agreed to appoint Streets to do the end of year. The rea-, let me finish, Martin, then I'll come back to you, okay? The reason we did all that there and then, in our standing orders, it says that the delegated powers, anything that may impact, if the clerk is only working eighteen hours a week and then has got the office being open for all these hours and she's having to deal with public, then she's on her own, then it could impact on the work that she needs to get done. And the thing that is really upon us is that we are coming towards year end. And that is, end of April is financial tax for things, even though the financial working groups are doing spend this work and assuredly that there shouldn't be any issues. And the streets things, they were also looking into just ensure that this council can move forward. So I get where you're saying it might be petty, Martin, but to me, financial accounting is not petty.
I wasn't saying the financial accounting, I'm saying the business of notices going up, saying office hours. Can I just make one other question? Obviously, I may be doing it on the wrong one. Tell me if I should be talking about it on item eleven. Because at that same meeting, which I can't see that you've reported back to us, you agreed that you would appoint an assistant to the clerk, which I don't object to. But you said up to twenty pounds an hour for a part-time member of staff now. Could we have clarification at the council that you haven't spent twenty pounds an hour?
Yes, you can have clarification. We haven't spent twenty pounds an hour.
You spent, that would be nice to know.
Do you want to know how much?
No, because that's a staffing issue. I just wanted to know.
It's considerably less.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, it's just that we looked into what, because in that fact, on some guidance you suggested to ourselves or to me, was that you hoped that we would go out to agencies and get their, get agencies in. And I went and looked at agencies, how much they were quoting, and that was the upper limit.
Yeah.
So I knew that the importance of it needed to be considerably less. There are two things on it. I've got Vince at the moment who is wanting to pass this through. There's two things on here which the staffing committee didn't agree on. We wanted to bring this to council specifically. To do with, come on, we are. Honest. Completely lost it now. Just remind me. The clerk is signed off till then, the assistant clerk is putting the workload, blah, blah, blah. Assistant clerk's hours are increased to thirty hours. That's what we agreed at staffing, yeah? The office hours are changed to make sure that you do it. That was agreed at staffing. And we employ a part-time person.
Yeah.
Right, okay. So it's engaging Streets.
The one on there was the, was the legal advice.
Yes, right, okay. Okay, well, in that fact, what I'm going to do is because we have a repetition on this, we've got a repetition on eleven that I've got on item ten. So all I'm going to say is that I'm going to ask that the council acknowledge this report. Vince is proposing that we acknowledge the report, excluding three and four, because that's going to be covered on item eleven. Secondly, by Stan. Martin, you want to say something before we vote?
Yeah, I, I, it's very difficult when we have members of staff sitting there. I don't want them to take it wrong. But I would like to think that there would be somebody responsible if it's not yourself as chairman, if agreed with members, that, that it isn't just the responsibility of a member of staff to record their own hours. That there should be a check.
Okay.
That's all. I don't know who can do it, but it's a safeguard for everybody.
Okay, I hear what you're saying. I, I, I get it. I have total.
Especially when that person's going to be, sorry, Alison, but they're going to be paying. No, no, that's why I said, that's why I think it's wrong that we have to discuss these things with.
I appreciate the observation. I think that the fact that I'm not going to employ somebody to record your hours, I'm not, I can't ask a councillor to come in and record hours. We have to give, we have total confidence that the assistant clerk will record our hours fairly and appropriately. So acknowledge your comment, but.
It's just that it's been.
Can I say something here, please?
You can do. I'd like to think that we all trust Alison. We do. Yes, we do, even Martin, he's not.
Yeah, and I wasn't saying that.
There's no need for that to stay.
Well, no, there is because we have a responsibility to make sure things are done properly.
Martin, Michael, you want to say something?
To clarify all of this, maybe Alison will say, well, I'd be happier if the finance working group or the assistant mayor or the mayor signs off my chief.
Yeah, which I have got, I have.
Well, that's all I'm asking, it's just a safeguard. It's nothing, it's not attacking you, Alison, or anything.
Yeah, that's fine.
Because you're the, you're the person who's going to sit there and actually pay yourself.
All right. Right, okay. Thank you for that, for clarifying that. Anybody else, any comments? Oh, we've got a proposal on the table to accept the staffing decisions, seconded by Stan, all those in favour? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. So apologies for the confusion. I say it has been a very difficult period for everybody. So that's why I'm being quite relaxed with some of the, with some of the behaviours this evening. Not Martin's necessarily, but we're all quite tense at this time. We're just asking that we all just take a step back.
Firefighting, really?
We're fi-, we are firefighting, yes, very good. No fire. Okay, item eleven then. This will pick up the bit where we discussed the staffing. And because we overstepped on the toes of our finance working group, I've been taking advice from, I'm going to let Michael and Michael carry this one forward. Item, the orange one here, it's basically HR solution advice service is engaged for a further three months and the cost is three hundred pounds. But we, oh no, it's my document, isn't it? Yeah, sorry, it's mine. All right, yeah, listen, I'm back on track now. It's, it's in my tea. Right, okay, all this is, this is what we didn't, right, this is what we didn't sign up for staffing, beg your pardon. Right. We've been using a HR solutions advice service to help guide the council on certain elements of our HR. We did it with the pensions thing, I think everybody remembers that. They work, they do a three-month period of contract. It costs about a hundred pounds, well, it does cost a hundred pounds a month, if you turn it back, apologies. It's a hundred pounds a month. They come to the end of term, at the end of April, and because of the situation we've got with the clerk off ill, and it's a HR matter, and none of us are HR professionals in this world, the first item here is that we re-engage HR solutions just for a further three-month period at three hundred pounds. And the second item is, is that because of some of the, there have been allegations and comments made, which I'm not going to go into, and I believe it is appropriate that the staffing committee in this council engage expert legal HR advisor in the company. And that the council explore the potential for doing this. So we're not saying we're going to sign up to twenty thousand pounds worth of HR advice, nothing like that. We're just announcing the council to give the staffing committee permission to explore the potential for engaging an expert legal HR company. So the first guide gives local advice, the other one is legal advice. It's to do with employment law specific. Those are the two things on the table. Any comments or questions around the table? Shoot. Vince.
Regarding the HR solutions, we employed him for twelve months previously, didn't we?
He's done three months, Vince.
So it was a full twelve months we employed him for, previously, I believe.
We've only ever, we've only ever employed him. Right, initially, he was employed for three months and that was wrong because it hadn't been signed up by council. So it got knocked off, so that was three hundred pounds. Then it came back to council and he was employed for a three-month term, which is this one, which has paid him. So this would be a nine-month engagement.
In view of the work that's been done, I would propose that we accept that item one.
Yeah.
Item two, again, I would propose that we accept that with a caveat of we return that in conclusion by the next meeting.
April, the.
May, it's May.
May, the eleven.
So we're not sort of dragging it, that's all.
Yeah, no, that would be, that would be the idea because we don't want to hang around because obviously we need to get the bar. So any other comments coming around to Mi-, Peter, go to Peter.
Yes, I mean, this is new to me. What do we actually get from this HR solutions? Is there someone we can phone up and they'll give us guidance?
Yes, he will actually, if we have a query, let's say that, I mean, in theory, we could check the CIPD website, but you have to be a member of that and it costs about two hundred and forty pounds a year to be a member to get the current today thing. But this guy, you can ring him up. If you've got a hiccup, let's say that we wanted to change the hours down or we wanted to move them around or something, if we were not clear, they will give us advice. And they, he guided us last time. And it's very local. And in theory, he will know legal stuff. So I'm not saying he doesn't know the legal stuff, but the legal element is purely to do with other matters in relation to the, to staffing. The, the, the HR thing is a retainer, basically, so. And if we use it, if we use it, brilliant. If we don't use it, it's going to cost us three hundred quid. But I can see that over the next period, we will probably need more advice. And the more advice we can open ourselves up to, and this chap will probably come and see us as well. He did before.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Can I just give a reminder to that?
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, this is all very delicate. Should we consider having a barnstorming meeting with all of us to look at options of moving forward?
Love it. Yeah, we can arrange that. Yeah, I can, I can, I'll make a note that we arranged that. I haven't got a problem with that at all. I like that idea because even everybody needs to be involved. Martin, I'm going to come round and I'll come to you, Michael. Martin?
Yeah, obviously, you explained how we came about using this company, so I don't have to go into too much detail.
Thank you.
But it was wrong when we first had it. I've never been too clear what they actually do for us. I, I did question the previous chairman when it wanted to be reinstated. And he said to me in the meeting that they can provide legal advice. So I have no objection to this point number two of the staffing committee seeking it. But if we are paying this man, which seems to be very cheap, especially when he comes to see us, maybe rather than just going out, because none of us are qualified to know where to go, maybe you should consult with him to find out what, if he can do it or where we could go to. Rather than a separate item, I think it should just be included with that.
He's, well, because there's two different companies, that's the reason it's separate. But he is key to basically helping us, guide us. He guided us before when the clerk was ill before to a certain extent. And now there are certain other elements which we can't go into detail on because it's private in relation to staffing. I can't discuss staffing in an open forum. Apologies to members of the public for that. And it, and what it is, I have to make sure that I protect the staff and the council. So that's why the legal element comes in.
Yeah, but that was just the comment, that I didn't want to miss out for what we pay, which seems to be a very reasonable amount of money, and end up paying for something we could get from him.
It might be that he comes up with the answers. We don't need the legal, but at least have the option. Michael, Alison.
It is very simply levels of competence, levels of life. A good HR person will take things up to a certain level. And if he is good, he will know when to say, I think you should talk to an employment lawyer about that or that.
Yes, I mean, HR.
It's a question of levels.
Has any, sorry, can I just ask one last thing? Has anybody here actually met him and can give me the confidence that he is doing what you require?
Yes, yes, yes. Or Stan might be able to answer that.
Yeah, during the period where we employed him before, I, I was obviously on that working group and met with him and he was most helpful. And it was money well spent.
Okay, that's what I want to hear.
Yeah. And the thing is, we won't, no, no decision will be made on the second bit, you know. We had the proviso to do it, so we, we have what we have. Anyway. So the proposals then are the, we'll go one at a time. Item one is that HR solutions are engaged for a further three months. That proposed by Michael. Seconded by Stan, all those in favour? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. And the second one is that the proposal looking forward that the council staffing committee explore the potential for engaging an expert legal HR company, reporting back to full council on costs involved and what's such a service for the council. And proposed by Vince, seconded by Michael Elliott. Yes, all those in favour? I'm going to share the love there, you see, that's unanimous as well. Thank you very much. Once again, I must keep apologising to say it's been a quite a difficult day with my paperwork.
Yeah.
Financial, item twelve. We have item twelve?
Yes.
Okay, somebody else, please? Michael and Michael.
That's the board there.
Right, brilliant. That's it?
I think it was, of course, it's delivered to the council as simply as possible. So, do you want me to read it through?
Just, I think everybody's read it.
Well, I'm recited, it's not that long.
Well, Martin, I have a question before you read it.
Okay.
Martin?
I don't want to interrupt.
Council approved at the February the twenty fourth, two thousand and sixteen meeting, the appointment of Streets accountants to prepare Oakham Town Council's final accounts for the year-end year three of two thousand and six, at a cost of seven hundred and fifty pounds. I'll just break into that text at that point. Members should understand that at the year-end, there are two documents, two distinct documents, but they're very related. There is the final account drawn up in something like standard income expenditure and balance sheet for that. And there is quite separately a document entitled annual return, which is that required statutorily by parish, by parish council. The figures and numbers in the annual return are drawn directly from the final accounts, but they are expressed in a different order and to some extent grouping of them is carried out. So it is a different document. It isn't on, so somebody knows what they're doing, that difficult, but it needs doing. It's a statutory requirement and there's an end date for that to go in. In the circumstances that we did have, you thought the clerk was away. So Finance Working Group prior to the twenty fourth of February meeting recommended that Streets prepare the accounts at a time when new account software was being put in for the reason that the preparation of final accounts requires a different mindset to doing monthly accounting. The add-on of three hundred and fifty is coming as a recommendation in light of the fact that the clerk is now away. And yet, that statutory element of this end-of-year task will need doing. As to how, to what extent three hundred and fifty seems to be worth it for the size of job, there is an argument to say, and I would put that argument forward, that having a professional firm of chartered accountants put their name to the annual return gives the council confidence, professional confidence in the confidence of the preparation. And for that reason, we, the Finance Working Group, asked Alison to authorise it or enable her to authorise that expenditure. Does that?
Yeah, Martin, anything? Yeah, I have a question.
It's more comments than questions. I have a problem here and I'm going to upset the working group because the working group has no powers to advise the clerk or the assistant clerk in this way. Their powers are to do what is instructed by this council and to report back to this council. That's all I'll say on that. This, I'm very confused at why they have authorised this expenditure. Is this being done twice? Because this is what I disputed in the staffing committee, but you authorised, I believe.
Yeah.
So.
This is the duplication bit?
Yes, so who has actually authorised it? Nobody, really. And, and that's why I said it should have come to this council meeting. So it could have been properly authorised because we had the same situation last year when we appointed Streets and their bill went up and that didn't really get properly authorised. I find that the, can I just finish and then I'll sit down? I, I find this whole business with the accounts is appalling. We spent over two thousand pounds on a reports from Streets and we haven't even started using the tools of that recommendation. And that was that we implement new software. We've only just bought it a year on. It, it, it's an appalling situation. We've had no internal audits. So the fact that an accountant who is competent, registered, transfers figures from one document to another gives me no confidence in. So let me finish.
Oh, sorry.
Gives me no confidence in the accounts. And when I'm told by a member of the Finance Working Group, we're aware that there's been no internal quarterly audit, but we just need to move on. I find that unacceptable. We've got to find out why this is not happening. This is public money and this is the root. We've got to find out why this is not happening. This is public money and this is the root of the problem, not me.
Okay.
The root of the problem is that the council is not doing what it's required to do by law.
Right, thank you, Michael. Uh, Michael Haley was going to actually respond to part of that. Um, thank you, Michael.
I'll, I'll respond on the question.
Yes.
Which was that the authorisation is under a standing order, all of three years on paper says, and the financial regulation four point one. Which does give the assistant clerk the authority to spend this amount of money. Now, the working group, as Martin quite correctly says, they've no delegated powers responsibility. Which is why the working group did not raise the order, this is done by the clerk. What the working group did was to check and advise the assistant clerk that she had the authority to do this. Under the orders and financial regulations.
And you should be advising council, not the assistant clerk.
Okay, please, please.
That's stated on, on the table.
Okay, uh.
Twice. Well, it is, it is the same item. There is. A case for saying under the staffing committee heading. That we are trying, that they are trying to give Alison the best possible support at a time when. There is firefighting needing to go on.
Yeah.
Any way of delivering that support, I have taken your, uh, staffing committee report is to take this load off her.
Yes.
And therefore, that's what it does. Second, it's coming under this heading because we came at the subject of. How do we do the annual return when the previous authorisation was? Under, under Richard, what Richard wants, it was just that they should do the accounts and he would fill in the annual return. But we have now not got Richard to fill in the annual return, so we've come at it purely from the technical. Statutory financial angle.
Yeah.
We need it done and the best possible way to do it with confidence is to get them to extend their role.
Yeah, brilliant. And the council approved at the February meeting to appoint streets to do the financial accounts, that's what it states there.
Yes.
And the duplication is that the staffing committee have already with their delegated powers under the. Uh, remit of the standing orders in relation to the clerk being off and the need to make sure the office can still function. Have already agreed to the additional three hundred and fifty pounds.
No, I, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't think that's.
Okay, so we need to.
I think you, the interpretation of your note that included the three hundred and fifty pounds under either three or four.
Ah, yeah, okay.
Is that it is helping the assistant clerk.
Right.
Which you're authorised to do. As a staffing committee, including spending up to five thousand pounds with a replacement of any sort.
Okay.
And this is helping the clerk.
Right. Look, that's Martin wants to answer me.
Yeah, you're right. I'm, I'm not happy with the situation. And that standing order which you used at staffing committee, you admitted yourself, is very ambiguous, I think is the word. Well, a bit open ended. Um, so what I, what I would like to get is that there is clear. Authorisation from this council, so it is. I don't believe there is when you've got two different points being brought up, two different people authorising it. I haven't authorised it and I would, I would like it to be authorised by a full council and then that stops. The, this, this business where people feel it's necessary to pay streets this extra money to basically write some figures. Yes, that needs, that needs.
Well, just go for what you're going to get, authorisation, if this proposal is passed.
Right, okay, let's.
Yeah, so three times it's going to be authorised.
No.
No, right, that's. I don't think the, the report from the staffing committee was concentrating on authorising.
It did, they authorised it because I disputed it in the meeting and told them that it was an unlawful. Uh, decision and he said he didn't care.
I thought, what am I about that?
And Joyce said similar as well.
We were covered legally to do it in standing orders, but so we can put this to bed, the whole of the council is here now, the exception of one. Um, they've got the paper in front of you. I will say again, the council approved in February. The streets accounts to prepare the financial end of year, which was seven hundred and fifty plus that. With the clerk going sick and in lieu of what has happened with the staffing committee, the same conclusion has been drawn. Do we accept? Once and for all, the Oakham Town Council's annual return at a cost of three hundred and fifty pounds is completed by streets. Proposed by Michael Haley, seconded by councillor Howard, always in favour? Neither you or state, I've seen.
I'm against.
Martin's against. You're not minoting?
You, you don't have to minate.
Okay, that's fine, I'm just asking, I can apply. So, um, that's fine. Thank you very much for everybody for, uh, working through this. We have, we have worked within, we have worked within the regulations. That we have our standing orders.
Well, we've, we've got three times that it's been approved somewhere.
We're only doing work, so we're only paid once. At least, at least.
Hope so.
There is an element here where before we'd missed it and not done it at all, this time we can't say that we've not done it, okay?
Okay, before we move away from finance, can I just ask, would it be appropriate for me to ask that the accounts are audited? Because we can't accept the accounts if they haven't been internally audited.
Can I come back to on that one? Because I need to, I know, I saw your comment on all three of your answers.
I might do an agenda item for the A G M to ask for it to be audited.
Thank you. Um, that would be appropriate perhaps. Agenda items is always a good way to voice, uh, opinions and get things sorted. Uh, uh, item thirteen, if there's nothing else at the moment, is co-opting of new member. There's no report, I'm not going to apologise for this one because I want this to be a little bit. I want us to move away from what we've done in the past on the point of view that. Decide whether you want to talk to new member. Does this council want to co-opt a new member? That's the first question. And then the second, second question would be how are we going to do it? So any comments or observations from around the table?
What's, what's legal now?
What does?
What is legal? Do we need another councillor?
We, we, well, we do, we, we are one short because obviously, uh, Mr. George left.
Do we say, if we say no, is that legal?
Well, we're one, but I mean. One, one would be short.
One short, one would be short and underrepresented, so it would be probably not. Yeah, it would be legal. Yeah, uh, Martin?
It's, it's not, I looked into it obviously because there's always been an interest to me how the co-opting process has changed and. Been sort of done here. Um, there is no obligation at this point for the council to. Co-opt, but I don't think it's advisable that you took that option. I think we should. But the law's very unclear, well, there is no law about how we. Do it apart from the fact we advertise it and we have to. Appoint that person with an overall majority. So all these things where we've tried interviews and whatever. There's no requirement to do that. There is no requirement. Somebody could walk in that door tomorrow and say, I want to be co-opted in the next meeting, we can just vote for them.
Okay.
But it's nice to get to know and let them know what the job is, but that's what.
The, uh, obviously it was, um, there's been a period of time which has now expired where we've been advised by the monitoring officer that we can now co-opt. Because nobody's called an election. Uh, Vince has just said that he believes that we should, so I, I agree with that, so. Shall we make a proposal that we?
I would propose that we, uh.
Co-opt.
Co-opt, so we ad- we advertise with a, um, view of co-opting on.
Okay, right, so a proposal by Vince is that we advertise and co-opt or co-opt and advertise that we're going to co-opt.
We advertise properly.
Yeah, absolutely. But you're in the street with leaflets, hopefully. Uh, seconded by Martin, all those in favour of a caution? That's unanimous, I think. Yes, it was. Thank you very much. Now. So we're going to co-opt, we're going to advertise it correctly. What process do the council want to use? Do they want to appoint an interview panel? Do they want to, the first person, the thirty-one person, how do you want to do it, guys? Stan?
Uh, I, I, I think the, the best way to do it is to have an interviewing panel.
Okay.
We had a very good interviewing panel last time. And, um, I think that is essential because we need to weed out that we get the right person.
Okay, right.
Because we don't have to call.
That's a problem.
Right, uh, okay, right, thank you for that. Let me see what Peter has to say.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, being on the receiving end a couple of months ago.
Thank you a minute, Martin.
Yeah, colleague, um. I think it's the right way because you can have an exchange of views. You can see the type of candidate, the candidate can ask questions. Um, I must say, Uppingham, uh, they have tended to do it that for council. Does the interview, but I think it puts some people off. Um, because, um, I mean, here we're twelve, I think there they're fifteen.
Yeah.
So it can be a bit overpowering for someone who's never had experience of local authorities. So I think a small interview panel is, is the ideal.
Okay, Martin?
I totally agree with the idea of a small panel, but what I'm finding frustrating. Is the comments like we weed out the people. It's been said before in public. We don't, I don't believe we have this right to decide who wants, if they come here, we should just do them, but. I think the interview should be based more on. Can you do this for the council? Somebody needs to, yeah, somebody needs to work out a proper thing because I sat in the last one and I'm not going to look anywhere. And the person was asked personal things about their job and things, nothing to do with us.
Okay.
And I, and I, and I just feel that, yeah, it's got better over the years, but I, I just feel that we need to look at what the small panel, which I would accept. Do when that interview is conducted and if members want to come and get an opinion of the person that they're going to be asked to vote for, I hope we would be able to. To do that because I would refuse to go on a panel because I don't think I have the right to. Challenge anyone.
Can I call?
Yeah, sorry.
That's all right, I understand what you're going to say. Michael, uh. One issue is numbers of people, whether it's fifteen or three. Um, it's, it's, it's a question of what the council has just expressed, it might or might not be frightening. Of, the other point is, should there be a job specification? I think is the, is really behind. The suggestion that the panel, but it's not a job, I was going to come on to say that. But in a way you're asking, should there be a specification that? Draws out what is required of a person applying, applying for the auction. It's not a job specification quite, but it's quite near it. Okay. And, and that's a question. Yeah, I've written down job specification. Tracy?
Um, yeah, I've obviously been on the receiving end of the interview and I would say. Absolutely, I had absolutely no problem talking about my work. I actually brought it up, I thought it was relevant to this role.
Yeah.
Um, because it is about skills and capability, I was talking about. How I would like to utilise the open spaces of Oakham, which is something that I do in my own job. It's a health improvement. Manager, so why wouldn't I want to bring skills and capabilities? And I didn't mind having those questions asked. I didn't feel like it was being, I was being interrogated and I certainly didn't mind having those.
I, um, it might be just me, but I'm getting a very strong feeling that we're going to be going for an interview panel, so can we have a proposal? Proposal by Vince had that we.
Can I propose that we have an interview panel? Uh, for councillors with a view that it is open to other councillors to attend, but with no input.
Okay, what would be the core number of councillors on that?
I would say a odd number would be appropriate, three or five.
Five?
Five.
Five is too many.
Five is too many? Oh, okay, we have five last time. Okay, proposal from Vince, a interview panel is established which consists of a core of five members who are the. Interview panel and any of the councillors can attend to witness, which is obviously last time. Martin, you want to say something before that?
Yeah, when you were talking about. It's not a job, it might feel like it at times, but there was a document that used to be sent out to. Everybody who was interested in being a councillor and I think it is still attached somewhere on the website. So could we look at that and get it updated and it points out the responsibilities and.
It was sent out, I.
You got it, but there has been times where it hasn't been sent out.
When, when people apply, it's sent out. So, so we've got the proposal by Vince, seconded by Stan, all those in favour?
How far?
It's to have an interview panel of five members. You've forgotten, hasn't it? Is that unanimous? So interview.
Five members plus last year.
Any house that can attend, but not participate. Um, do we want to identify this evening who the councillor is going to be on that interview panel? If you want to put their names forward, can I, can I suggest? We have the same panel we had last time.
Oh, because I'm not here.
So we've got new members on since then, so other people might go on, so who, who would, who would like to be, who would, let's, I'll go and go around the table and ask. Michael, are you interested in getting on that?
Yes.
Or Michael, actually it's Vince, Vince Harry is interested in getting on that. Stan?
Yeah, I've been on everyone's, so.
Joyce?
Yes, to make the balance of matters.
Uh, Peter?
Are we going to vote on it?
We're going to, yeah, I'm just trying to get a feel. You, you trace?
Yeah, I'd like.
Trace, uh, Martin?
No, I won't, I won't do it. I don't think I have a right to question it.
Michael Elliott?
Well, Chairman, you asked a question and in a way now we're answering it. Are, are we tonight going to?
Yeah, we are.
I'd like to take a, a, a small time until we think about it and come back to it.
Okay, well, yeah, we can do that. I mean, they're asked, I'm just thinking that, um. We do need to identify who they are from the point of view that what is the, the other thing I was going to mention was time scales.
Yeah.
Do we want to be kicking this off and having it concluded within a set time scale?
Yeah.
What kind of people indicate to you separately without the formality and strangulation of, of processes? By, that I would like to be on the panel and, and so you collect together without having to do it now?
Uh, what do other members think on that one?
We have to approve it.
The trouble is we have to approve them.
Have to approve what?
Who's going to be on the interview panel at council?
We could put you on it, Michael, and then drop out if you don't want it.
No, it's, it's, no, it's actually answered, that's, that's a delay.
We do have to build in a delay. We do have to make that decision tonight, so, uh, and with this amount of people at the moment.
Four, six.
I've got, we've, we've got, we've got seven, we've got one, two, four, so we've got seven names. You've got, you've got, I've got seven names.
Set me off it, then that makes it six.
Vince.
No, I want Vince on it, I don't want Stan on it.
That's not, it can't be like that.
Sorry, what? I'm entitled to say that.
Um, you could have five come to six, you need to reserve really, don't you?
So we have, well, we could put these six forward, so that, that gives us, uh, Michael Haley, uh, Stan. Joyce, Tracy, Sally Anne and Michael Elliott.
I, can I object to Stan on the basis that a candidate?
No, that would be inappropriate.
Well, no, because you're asking me to vote on it.
One, one, I check.
You know why, Stan.
No, no, that's, that's.
When you told one of the candidates to stay away from me, keep me at an arms' distance.
No, that would be inappropriate, that's me, I've never done it, I probably would make it up. As gentleman, as gentleman, as gentleman, thank you.
No, Chairman, I'm not having this, mate. I'm not having these lies, so.
It's not lies, I'll take you to the former candidate and they will not lie to you. They can't stand you and I can't either. I'm not being sworn at like you swear at me either.
Right, thank you. What's just been, what's just been suggested to me, the proposal on the table is, is that those six names are on the interview panel. But on the night of the interview, only five of them, so there'll be one, there'll be five in reserve.
Yeah.
No, that's fine because obviously with my work commitments, if I'm in London, for example, then.
So the six names are on the interview panel, Michael Elliott, Stan Stubbs, Michael Haley, Tracy Carr, Royce Lucas, Sally Anne.
But I think it should be chosen individually.
No, but you've got, you've got the next six.
Sorry, yes, yes, I'm sorry, Michael, yes.
You got the, yeah, you got Michael, that's fine. So that's the proposal by.
Me.
Vince, seconded by Sally Anne, thank you. All those in favour? Are you abstaining or against?
I'm against.
So it's nine, four and, uh.
I don't want somebody who sits in this meeting and says we're doing it to weed people out.
Uh, time scales, um, just say, should we advertise and then pick up the time scales as to go that we try and get this concluded within a month? I don't want to be any more specific. A G M is the eleventh of May and it would need to go.
Two weeks today.
Two weeks today.
Yeah, that's the thing, they might not want to come.
Yeah, it won't be in the paper till next week, but we'll, let's see what happens. I'd say that by the end of May that we will have an answer to this and obviously the. The committee will then, we'll be, uh, I'll come to you in a minute, Martin, the, the, the interview panel will obviously identify the person, think is appropriate. That will be brought back to the meeting in May, whichever one that is, with their recommendation and then we will vote at that point.
So what, so what closing date do you want?
Um, the closing date could be two weeks. When's the, when's it going in the paper? Next Thursday? I'll give it two weeks after it goes in the paper. That's why it will take a bit longer.
Two weeks, Thursday.
And interviews the week after.
And where does he want to advertise? Just the?
Rotland Times and Stamford Mercury? Rotland Mercury Facebook?
Coming on the, um, Oakham Town Facebook page.
Yes.
So it's the day twenty seventh.
Twenty seventh.
That's the Friday.
Twenty seventh, twenty seventh, twenty seventh day.
Twenty seventh of May is the Friday.
So it's going to be.
It's the bank holiday then, uh, the following Monday.
So Rotland Mercury Facebook page. Can I just ask when it's, it will be actually advertised? Because it would be nice if people are interested, that they might turn up on the eleventh to see how it all works.
Well, candid, that would be, yes. Well, it'll be advertised a week, it'll be advertised next week, so it'll have to be in the papers a week before the eleventh.
Would it go on the Facebook page?
Oh, yeah, Jasmine's name.
Yes, we'll get it, we, we, we'll get it on Facebook as quick as we can.
And our website as well.
Yeah, all right, so we're going the Rotland Times.
Well, Wednesday, isn't it?
Yeah.
Facebook.
And Facebook.
And, and our website.
Yeah.
And webshop.
I'll come to you in a minute, Martin, I've not, I've not forgotten yet.
Okay.
I'll come to you in a minute, Martin, I've not, I've not forgotten yet, I do.
Posters in town, in the notice boards.
Yes, there'll be posters, don't know, come, we ask. Thank you. And, um, we don't need to vote on the expenditure for the adverts, cause that's well within the delegated powers of the class, if everybody's happy with that.
Yeah.
Uh, I feel that we should prefer that we've agreed to put it in the papers, though, do we need to do that?
Have we ever done that before?
Well, it would be a matter of.
Statutory notice.
Yes, it would be a matter of, yes, statutory notice, thank you, so no need to, right, Martin.
As we're putting a statutory notice in the wonderful Rutland Times, probably under Rutland, um, Mercury.
Yeah.
We have a press officer, could he not do a feature? That they are likely to print, saying what wonderful things we've achieved in the last year and how a new person would be made so welcome?
Yeah, okay.
It'd be appropriate to do it off the back of the beacon, which is gonna be next week anyway.
It could, it'd be, I think to get it more out there.
The last item on the agenda is to cover item fourteen, which is the remittance from Rutland County Council. This is to authorise assistant clerk to replay the sum of sixty two thousand five hundred pounds. Yeah, replay to Rutland County Council that was paid in error. Uh, Martin, and then I'll come to Vince.
Um, yes, I'm gonna kick calm. Or try if I'm not interrupted, um. I'm astonished, well, obviously the words are here are error, but there's been a lot of communication since the money arrived at the council. And I'm appalled that one person, I would say from the evidence we've received today. Made a unilateral decision to give this money away. And it's appalling, um, from what we've received, some members haven't received it. But because it came to Adam quite late. We, we now have full confirmation from the officer at Rutland County Council that it is our money. So I don't think we need to return it, even though it was suggested by the police. That it probably would be the proper way so that we get it back with proper instruction. But I believe we've got, if that email was sent to the office, that it was the case, or was it just to the chairman? That we do have proper indication that it's our money to do whatever we feel fit with, within proper.
Glad you said that.
Proper, um, what was the word they used?
Can't remember.
But there was one other concern, and I hope you're not gonna shout at me. Um, it does actually say that you knew about this back to two thousand and fourteen, that they had copies of emails.
Why does it say that?
In the email, he says that in there that he'd sent you copies.
Yeah, I do, I do know, oh, well, when you say that.
So I'm, I'm slightly puzzled to know why the working group wasn't set up to discuss why this money. When it was said that the council received communication back previous to two thousand and fourteen. It's never been to council and I, it shocks me really, because it's not a few pounds, it's a lot of money. And it's caused a lot of people, um, a lot of distress in this last twenty four hours. And could have had serious implications and, and I think it needs to be sorted properly. And one of the suggestions from the Rutland County Council, he's not here, is that this money is put into a high interest account. And that would be my recommendation, and we don't decide what to do with it flippantly. We can leave it because I've checked, and you will check obviously as chairman. Unusually for one O six payments, there is no time scale to when we spend it. So I think we've got plenty of time to decide how the town council wants to spend it. Cause I did send email to members today of the job description. And I'm really quite appalled that the town centre manager's job is twenty hours a week for eighteen months.
Right, we're getting a chance.
Sixty two thousand five hundred pounds.
Somebody else to have a chance to do, cause I've, I've got Vince.
So that's my, my thing is that we don't send it back.
Yeah, and you've taken it, so what we should do with it?
No, we're gonna have to do that as a council, we have to just tell them, we've got to decide ourselves what we do with the money. And then we, we've got to advise Rutland County Council what we do with it.
Right, Vince?
In view of item fourteen, being the playback or peli back of the sum of sixty two thousand five hundred pounds. In view of the evidence that has come to light today, I would suggest that we scrub agenda item number fourteen. And look into, following further investigation, the appropriate way to use this funding.
Oh, that is a proposal on the table, have that thought. Michael Elliott?
Chairman, uh, as indicated to you before the meeting, the finance working group is offering. To try and clarify the remaining imprecision that there seems to be in the trail of this money through. So that the Oakham Town Council can be sureer than it is at the moment that it has the right to hold on to this money. Or that it ought to repair it. And we have come to the conclusion, the way of framing this, that. We would hold on to the money for, say, two weeks, or a period of time which we can define more, more precisely. During which time we will follow this trail through and try and clarify the ambiguity, the imprecision. And clear the, the drama that's developed, a way into a straightforward trail.
Brilliant, okay, I like that, um. Peter?
Thank you, um, yes, and I think somehow in the past the town council got off track on us. But, um, whether it's gonna be serve any useful purpose to, to, to go back, I don't know. But obviously we need to avoid this in the future, there's a large sum of money here and, um. As Michael said, it's rather imprecise what, um, what has been happening. I'm not against the town partnership, but I've been through this with Uppingham. And if you look on the Uppingham website, which it does give chapter and verse. Um, on equal footing with us, what the money is for, what it can be used for. And I'm sure if we do our own checking, that it, well, the, the answer will, will be the same. I think what we should do after tonight is, um, we've got something on the table, approve that. And then confirm to RCC what we've done and say we're holding on to the money. Um, whether we invest it or, or, or what, I don't know. Um, I would also like to think that, um, we can follow suit. I don't, I, I did say two meetings ago, I don't like referring to Uppingham because I'm familiar with what they do. But their, their website is something we should perhaps attain to, um, because it shows exactly what's happening. You know, it's very focused, um, it shows what the money is being split into. Um, and it is inviting tenders more or less, um, for grants, not loans, grants. Uh, for, uh, purposes within the town, and I think, you know, we, we, we're in the same boat.
Yeah.
It's just a pity that they've got the same as us, I just cannot understand that, but.
Well, that's, 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 that's another situation for me.
Um, I mean, are we gonna get, there's, there's our Lusker Road, Uppingham, uh, some of the others has been built. Are we gonna get half the, the sole money on there, I don't know.
No. Okay, no, that's right, I'll come to Michael Hayley, I'm aware, Martin, that you're in the wing, so Michael Hayley.
Um, in this morning, Peter really, I, I think, I, I support Michael's, both of Michael's made. I think currently that there's a bit of confusion and ambiguity over this money. Um, Oakham Town Partnership email I've had from them tend to suggest that they are expecting some of this money.
Of course they are.
There's much, uh, the line re-ozed it, P, funding to stop the ball rolling, this, this is for the employers of, of the town centre manager.
This council.
And when we get the sixty two thousand five hundred situation sorted out, we expect some of this too. So that, that there are expectations there that we are currently unaware of. So I, I think the first thing we should do is to have a clear audit trail, let's see where the money's coming from. Quite clear from county council, what we can do with that money, because they have contradicted themselves today. At, at one moment it was section one O six money, which I'm sure you, you know, is within limits, is ring fenced, what can be done with it? And on the second email, they are suggesting, or inferring rather, that it's not section one O six money. And it's to do what we want with, which to me, that does raise some concerns. I think we infer the clarification of that before we start deciding what to do or raising expectations. And clearly, at some point, we need to have a dialogue with Oakham Town Partnership, because they seem to feel. At this, or at least this morning, seemed to feel that they were gonna get some of this pot, which may or may not be the case. So I think if we, if we can, as Michael says, if we can do this investigation, get a clear financial audit trail. We can bring that back to council, so council can be informed and then we can make a decision on what we should be doing.
Um, I totally disagree, we should not be approaching the town partnership. You had no authority to, that was the problem, why we've ended up in that position we are now, because somebody went out. And discussed with them and said the council had given authority to give you all that money. The town partnership is a private company that's sitting on. Twenty, what is it, twenty four thousand nine hundred and ninety four pounds, they don't do anything for the town at the moment. And that's businesses telling me that, not my personal opinion, so there, there's been, no, no, let me finish. There's been a mistake, we should not be talking to the partnership at the moment, what we've got to do is acknowledge the fact that. This afternoon, the last email says that RCC don't want to talk about this anymore. That is what the email finishes off, this is the end of the subject. They've made it very clear in that email as a final document that it is our money. Now, I'm concerned that this money is sitting in our current account. I agree with Vince that we're not going to send it back, so I would second his proposal. But this evening, I would also like to propose that the assistant clerk is given the authority. To transfer this money out of our current account into the Cambridge Building Society as a first level of gaining some interest. And protecting the money from, because we have nearly two hundred and something thousand pounds in our current account. And as the clerk keeps telling us, if the HSBC, if the HSBC fails, we get nothing.
Martin, if that money doesn't belong to Oakham Town Council.
It does.
If, if it turns out that it doesn't, any interest we.
Well, so when, when senior officers are, when senior officers are writing and saying it's ours.
Let's, I'm gonna bring this back around to Michael Hayley, then I'll come over to Stan.
There's no confusion, the email you sent to us says that it's our money.
Yeah, Michael, just.
Then I put a proposal on the table, that the, so can you acknowledge that I also put a proposal, seconded Vince?
Yeah.
For his proposal, and my proposal is to give the, to give the assistant clerk authority to move the money. Out of the current account, which is heavily burdened. No, no, it's got to go into the Cambridge Building Society or something, cause that's only got sixty in at the moment, hasn't it?
Right, okay, we've got, I've got, I made a note. Wait, wait, because, uh, people want that is made forward, so please sit down, so somebody.
We've got too much money in the.
We're gonna come to councillor, Michael Hayley, then I'll come to Stan.
Thank you.
You can't have all that money in one basket.
Michael.
Can I just clarify a point, I, I have not been in correspondence with Oakham Town Partnership. Concerning funding, two days ago, I was approached by Oakham Town Partnership. To sit on an interview panel for this proposed, uh, centre manager job, which I agree on too. I then asked them by email three questions, could I have a copy of the job description? Could I have a copy of the job advertisement and where the job had been advertised? And could they confirm that funding was in place to pay for the post? Three questions, which I felt were pertinent if I was going to be involved in the interview panel. The line of the email I read out is the second paragraph of their response to me. And that, that is that in the sum total of my involvement with Oakham Partnership.
Thank you for that clarification.
Dan?
Can, can I suggest whoever is gonna take this forward, I wanna make one thing absolutely clear to everybody in this room. I know nothing at all, I was never involved in this money.
You sat here last week and told us what it was for.
Right.
It's on record.
I'm gonna make a comment on this anyway.
I haven't finished yet.
Okay, sorry.
I suggest that one of the, one of the, uh, uh, people they go to. Is Hawkesmead and Rutland County Council, cause that is where, um, it, it all started. The discussions with them, and also go to Terry King.
No, thank you, not from what I've been told today.
Chairman, can members talk without being interrupted by one particular person?
Doesn't it make a change that I'm interrupting you?
Yeah, Martin, can you, um, give Stan an opportunity?
Sorry, but I just don't like people telling fibs, he knew about it.
Martin, please.
Don't accuse me of lying.
Right.
I said fibs.
Right, this is, um.
Well, you called me a bastard, that's worse.
I was going to say that Terry King was on the partnership at the time when this was discussed.
Yes, and Terry King discussed with Alf Dewis what they were gonna do with the Sainsbury's money and the Tesco's money. At the same meeting, I've been told by a former member.
Speak, or do I, uh, wait till you finish, um. Let's get this into perspective, there, everybody is feeling quite, um, intimidated, jaded, accused, victims. Are we being, you know, who's done what?
Agreed.
Agreed, thank you, everyone's feeling agreed, um, and it is true, Martin pointed out at the beginning, that I have been to meetings of Rutland County Council. And spoken about the Oakham Town Partnership's town centre manager. And this has been going off for a couple of years.
Yes.
Now, I've been to meetings where it's been said that there's money going towards a town centre manager, it's never been said where the money's coming from. It's been said the money's been allocated, the, the inference has been that it's coming from RCC or from another source. But it is always, it's never been construed as anything other than above board. At this moment in time, we've used the word error on here, and so far as I'm concerned, there has been an error. Because the evidence points towards something, but we don't know what. And this is why I'm gonna come back to something of what Vince has said and something of what Michael has said. Um, before I get to that point, I will say that nobody on this council, sat around this table at the minute. Is aware of any attempt to divert town council funds to another organisation. That is categoric.
Apart from the fact I was told by Rutland County Council officers in a meeting this week, that it was Alf Dewis.
Thank you, he's not sat around this table, Martin, he's not sat around this table, so that's sat around this table, so.
There is, I agree with that, there is no one here who was involved.
Everybody else that, that has not been involved or mentioned any of that, ourselves have not been trying to fill sixty two thousand five hundred pounds. From Hawkesmead Estate through RCC, through our accounts to give to Oakham Town Partnership. Why would we do that? There would be nothing to regain from it, so let's put all the Miss Marple conspiracies to bed for one moment. There have been some very hurt over the last forty eight hours, and I've been very specific, I've said all the way along, I will tell you what I know. I will not divulge names where it brings people into suspicion if there is not reason to do that. The only time that Vince's name came out is because he was happy that that was done, because, well, he, like Michael, like me, like Stan, we have nothing to hide. The fact is, we've been dealing with one person at Rutland County Council and they have been very helpful. It concerns me that the rest of the county council have become shrinking violets on this matter. And the point where I'm going to look at this agenda item, I will say that. If out of the result of an investigation that is done by our financial working group, which is what's gonna be done.
They've been quite open to me about.
I will say that if I believe as chairman, that something or a misappropriation of public funds has occurred. Between Rutland County Council and any other organisation, I will report that to the appropriate authority. And that is not Rutland County Council, that is not Leicestershire Police. If I discover as chairman of this council that somebody has attempted to steal sixty two thousand five hundred pounds, then it will be reported.
But it can't be, can I, can I just say that when the police talk to me about this, so members know, the fact that the money, although it's minuted. That it was going in Oakham Town Partnership's minutes, that it was going to them, it came here.
Yeah.
So as far as Leicestershire Police are concerned, no crime or fraud has been completed.
There was an attempt by, according to.
They're not going to, they're not going to investigate an attempted fraud.
Um, because on the agenda items, at the beginning of this, Michael Elliott, um, was suggesting certain things. And Vince has suggested things, and there was a proposal, there is a suggestion, if we can amend this, Martin, that first thing is, the money remains where it is. There is a suggestion, if we can amend this, Martin, that first thing is, the money remains where it is.
Yeah.
Okay, so that will be part of the agenda item, yeah, right, so the first thing is that the money stays put in the Oakton Town Council account. Now, the second thing is that Martin said that he believes it should be moved from the current account to the Cambridge account. So that will be the second thing that will be decided. The third thing is, is that Michael said we need to clarify the money trail, verify ownership, because county council have turned around and said, yeah, it's yours, you can do with it as you wish. But we need to verify that, because even though they've said it in email, it, it is still vague. I still haven't got the answers, I've got, and even though I've gone and spoken to the local council people, the advisors, even when he's read the emails I've been sent, he is confused by it. He's like, well, what are they saying, what is going off? There is this veiled suggestion, it is not specific, they won't meet with me, which makes me suspicious. So let's clarify the trail, that would be the third thing.
More of the tone of your emails.
We verify the ownership. Once we've done that, we then decide how we're going to spend it, because it's not allocated at the minute, as far as I'm concerned. It was, I, we've, they've said it's our money, but I'm still not convinced. And on the, talking to the two Michaels earlier on, I feel that taking this approach is the right way. Are you okay with that?
Can...
So the first thing, I'm going to take this one step at a time, so that it is perfectly clear.
Can I just read the paragraph from the officer that you shared with all members this evening?
Yeah, you can do, but...
Or if I read the whole email, that is, then it's very clear. And because some members haven't, some members haven't received it, so it's important before we vote on this thing of going back to them. They don't want us to go back to them.
Right, okay.
And if I can just quickly read it, I know some people are puffing and puffing over there, but, but I mean, it's a serious, sorry.
That's me, not him.
Thank you, Vince.
Right.
Well, I can leave the name out.
No, no, you, you named me a bully.
No, I'm not intending to.
You named me a bully.
The piece I want to read out is actually the bit where they say it's ours.
Read it all.
There's no need to, Vince, there's no need to. If I, all I want to read out is the bit about that it is our money.
Good, I'll read it.
Are you, that, you're happy with that?
We're not going to be satisfied until we verify that anyway, so I'm not sure what the point is.
But we do have an email that says, and it's basically... Can I just read the last line? No, it says on, I'll read it, it says, "I do not feel any further correspondence on this subject is necessary."
It would be, but he doesn't listen to me.
Sorry, but that's what he's saying, "I do not feel any further correspondence is necessary."
Peter?
Can I put an alternate view?
Shoot.
I mean, RCC are saying they don't want to hear from us. Yeah, I think they've been naive through this. They should not have been doing what they have been doing without having checked the authority. Um, and obviously, there hasn't been authority there to do this.
Yeah.
Um, and I think we should, tonight, formally write to them and, 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 and put the current situation and that we understand that it looks like our money, but we need their confirmation.
Yeah, that's...
I don't think we should let them off the hook.
We're not going to.
Not proposal, no, sorry.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that, I've been about braces.
Yeah, yeah, right, well, this is how, well, let me, let me take this step by step. The first proposal that, that I'm looking to have made is that, item one, the money remains in Oakton Town Council account.
Proposed.
Proposed by Vince, seconded by Michael, all those in favour? That's unanimous. The second thing, which Martin said, that the money is moved from the current account to the Cambridge. Does anybody want to propose that?
Yeah.
Proposed by Vince, seconded by...
Well, it was Mike proposed, I'm hoping to be...
All right, so proposed by Martin, proposed by...
But I'm happy to alter it.
Proposed by Martin, seconded by Vince, all those in favour? One, two, three...
There is a, there is a reason for it, it's because we are not protected if the HSBC goes through.
We're voting, all those against it being moved. All those voting against the money being moved from the current account to the Cambridge.
Let's just hope the HSBC doesn't go bust.
Right, okay, right, can, uh, Martin, help me here?
But, sorry, chairman, the reason I'm asking for it to be moved is because the clerk has said in these meetings that we are not protected by the financial regulation.
We've already voted, it's the, the, we've had a vote.
So the money remains in Oakton Town Council account?
We've had a vote, we've voted.
But it shouldn't be in our current account.
Asking and asking and asking, because people haven't agreed with you, you know?
But you don't realise the serious implications if the HS...
Right, we've got no money.
I've, I've taken my marks about...
Can you, everybody be quiet, let's get this going, right, the money's remaining in the Oakton Town Council account, as Trace has just pointed out, the fact that it remains in the Oakton Town Council account means that we can't vote on two. Sorry, that's rare. The third item is, the third proposal would be along the lines are, is that the financial working group, which is Michael Elliott, Michael Haley, enter into a communication with Rutland County Council to clarify the money trail. How, how do you want it, how, how did that happen?
Well, I'm just hesitant to say as a preliminary that the, the offer was there, I did say the funds were... If anybody else feels that the...
I would, I would say that the financial working group, who had, Martin?
I had a concern with Michael Haley with an interest in the money, because he's interviewing for anybody who has a connection with the town partnership.
It's not for clarification, Captain Brooks, I have withdrawn.
But you didn't say that.
You did at the beginning.
And I didn't hear it, all the noise.
Okay, so the proposal is that the financial working group clarify the trail of money, that, yeah? So that's the proposal.
Papers, sir.
Seconded by, that's proposed by, by Michael Haley, seconded by Stan, all those in favour? Martin, you against or...
Well, yeah, because the council has said that what they...
Nine four one against.
Sorry.
Chairman, may I, may I say something after that?
Yeah.
I think it's important that there are no more emails about this from anybody that we allow, uh, the two Michaels to go ahead and do what they do.
Okay.
Because, um, it's needless to have these emails coming through, which quite must have just put straight into place.
The, um, there is, there is one more bit here, is that they're going to do clarify the money trail. Um, and, and the third, and the third thing is that they verify ownership and report back to the town council?
Yes.
Yes?
Um, just a slight amendment to that, that they report back on the, uh, boundaries and spending.
Yes, because one of the things they can do is verify ownership and remit if it's ours on how it should or should not be spent.
Right.
So that's a proposal by Vince, seconded by Stan, all those in favour? You against, Martin? Or Danny? Against, nine four one against. That, I think that will work for now, I thi, I think that, that formerly writing bit will, will hark to our... Because the finance working group can do their work and see what they bring up, um, and take it from there, because the money's not going anywhere. Uh, it's now twenty, forty...
Just hope the HSBC doesn't go bust. And it's in dodging, it's the HSBC. The finance working, Michael, you were supposed to addition or account to the...